Welcome everyone to the October meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Our first order of business will be to review the minutes from our September meeting. Have folks reviewed, are they okay? And if so, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved? Do we approve?
They're second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first is Periwinkle Bookstore. So if there's someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant, please stick on up to the mic.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Morone, architect. Sarah Underhill has bought the bookstore and is going to be renovating to keep it a bookstore, which is great. The front of the bookstore is going to be completely renovated with only one door. We're getting rid of the two doors that are there and putting one as centered as we can get it, but it couldn't be totally centered because there's some steel posts. So that's why in the picture, maybe you can flip to that picture of what's proposed. Oh. How do you do that? Oh. Yeah. Okay, thanks. So the new front will have big glass pane windows on the bottom and it'll be aluminum, black anodized aluminum trim. The columns and this trim on the bottom will be a wood painted black, a matte black. And above the windows are, they're all Marvin windows with divided lights across the front.
Will that all be flush to the street?
It's not, the doorway is set back about four, three and a half feet. So the door will itself, oops, has glass panes and it's going to be in that blue trim that I showed you, the periwinkle color. So it's kind of a theme for the bookstore, the periwinkle blue, and then that's the name of the store as well.
Where's the signage going to go?
So there's going to be an awning, but we haven't gotten that figured out yet. We're still working on that. There will be a small sign on the window, but like four inches high, something very minor. I think that's it. Yeah, there's glass panes on the inside, on either side of the window, on the door. I mean, the recessed part, maybe if you go to the plan, you can see.
What you're doing to the front change area that you're using?
No, not at all. Well, the only thing we are changing is when, there are two doors now that recess into the wall and now it'll just be one door recessed. So it's slightly changed, I guess.
Is this going to be the kids?
So the only approval you're coming to us with is for the frontage?
Exactly.
The interior changes don't require any planning board review.
Right.
You're only here because the change to the frontage requires
Yes, yes.
Planning board review. Those are going to be little casement windows at the?
They're, there's going to be fixed windows on top, yeah.
That's a nice touch. What's the overall timing on the project?
It's probably not going to start until January, do you think? I mean, it started construction now, but after Thanksgiving it'll start with the front.
The owner has some work to do currently and they're getting permits for that.
This is John Knox, who is the construction manager.
Hi, John Knox. The owner, we met with him today, they have some work to do, asbestos remediation, few other little odds and ends that they're working with the building department for permitting. Once they're done and those permits are all closed out, then we'll begin. We anticipate that kind of December 1 to start. And then it's roughly three months from there, something like that. Cross your fingers, but not lengthy. We've done some demo already on the inside.
Just out of curiosity, could we hear from the owner just about sort of what the vision is for this?
Sure.
Consider free advertising.
Free advertising. Well, actually, I had, this is something I've always wanted to do and I actually spoke to Gene and Wanda about buying Wamras from them when they ended up selling to the previous owner. And then this has nothing to do with Wamras. The previous owner went bankrupt and this, I'm just taking the space. What we're really, I'm really excited about this. It's, you'll see, it's, inside is amazing now. We've got 16-foot ceilings and it's all one wide open space. The idea here is that, you know, we've had a bookstore, an independent bookstore in Bronxville for more than 60 years. And we are really, we, the person who's going to be the manager is Allison Devlin and we both still have a lot of connections in publishing. In fact, she's still working for Penguin Random House. And so we, we're going to have a huge children's section, we're going to have author series, we're going to have book clubs, we're going to, it's just going to be, we really see it as a really vibrant, hopefully, a really compelling community space, as well as a place where you will have an extraordinary and constantly fresh selection of books. So it's just, it's really exciting and that's what we're hoping for. We had originally hoped to be opening for this past Christmas, or for this upcoming Christmas season, but many things have come in between. But I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of excitement on the ground about it. So we think it will be, it'll be great whenever we get to it, so.
Terrific. From the board, any questions for the architect or construction manager or issues? Okay, if there aren't more questions, we'll open up the public meeting, see if there's anyone who would want to comment on this application. Seeing no comment, we'll close the public meeting and open for discussion. Anyone have any thoughts?
First of all, I'm absolutely delighted that we are still going to have a bookstore in Bronxville. I was really heartbroken to see that it was, that Wamras was closing. So I think it's just commendable that we've taken it on. And the facade is fabulous, a great improvement. There's really nothing to critique. It's traditional, it's appropriate for Bronxville, it looks, you know, very inviting. I love the periwinkle, frankly, one of my favorite colors. So I really have nothing else, you know, to say.
The other thoughts? If none, does someone want to make a motion?
Move we approve the application for 76 Pondfield Road as submitted?
They're second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much. Can't wait to welcome you there.
We'll be there. Okay, next on the agenda, we have 30 Duesenberg.
Thank you all very much for your time today. This is our third time in front of the planning board on kind of a different topic, solar. So I think this is probably, maybe go back up to that last photo, the rendering. This might be the best place to sort of kick it off.
Before we get into the solar aspect, I think you were noting that, you know, you've been here before, right? And I think we had some meetings about this. I think we, you know, approved a fairly ambitious increase in the score for the house. But I think as a general matter, we, you know, expect that when folks come before us, they're coming before us with a complete plan, right? And that they won't be coming back saying, okay, we got this, now we want this, now we want this. And so I guess the question is, why wasn't this part of the initial plans that we could consider?
Yeah, it's a good question. And I think that solar is something that we've been thinking about for a while in connection with this project, which we talked about for several years. But there's a few reasons why, you know, we weren't ready last year. You know, one reason is that, you know, the technology and the aesthetics of solar are just sort of all over the place. And so, you know, we'd been, I'd been doing a lot of research into kind of, you know, is there kind of, is there a solar tile product that fits with an older house? An older house with slate roof, sort of traditional aesthetics of a Bronxville neighborhood? You know, we looked at Tesla, we looked at traditional solar, and we just couldn't find something that worked. Ergosun is a company that's done a lot of installations in Europe and they recently came to the U.S. several years ago. So it was kind of on my radar, but we weren't ready to propose it last fall. And then we really started to kind of accelerate our thinking about this when, you know, the tax law was changed, right? So this is, it's a higher-end product. As you'll see, it really blends in pretty seamlessly with the existing roof. And it's a, I think it's a good match for Bronxville, for folks like yourselves that are focused on the aesthetics and, you know, not wanting to see kind of big solar panels all over the place. This is not that. And so, but, you know, given the cost of it, the tax credit is meaningful. And so we thought, well, maybe we'll try it in a couple of years. But then with, with the change in the tax law, we decided we should, it's sort of all or nothing. We're going to either do it now or not do it. So that's why, that's why we're, we're coming to you again with this, with this project.
So with that, why don't we dive into it?
Yeah, okay. So I think this is kind of a good place to start. So what we're proposing here is a, we're looking for approval for a new solar roof. The solar roof tiles will be on the back-facing section of the roof. So maybe Christina, if you could just scroll up to the front pictures, these aren't going to be kind of perfect up. So when you think about the front of the house, the existing roof on the front of the house will, is and will remain 100% Vermont slate. The roof above the office on the right side is Vermont slate, that will remain the same. The garage, the roof above the garage, which is not shown here, but it's to the left of the house, that's going to be a brand-new roof, that will also be slate, Vermont slate. So this is not going to be, you know, this new, there won't be any solar tiles, any solar roof facing the streets. You won't really be able to see it. So maybe if you scroll back down to that rendering, this, this is where the, yeah, this is, this is where the solar roof is going to be. It's going to be in, in kind of all the back-facing roofs of the, of the house. The section of roof that you can't see that is facing our neighbors, the Horvers, 34, will, will be a, will be a concrete roof tile. It's going to be a dark charcoal, concrete roof tile. I've got samples here that I'll, I'll hand you guys to take a look at, which actually pairs pretty well with, with slate. So really what you'll be seeing here is in this section of the rendering, you know, that's all going to be this solar tile. And we did that intentionally for a few reasons. First of all, just the direction that the house faces. It basically, in the morning, that back-facing section of the roof is going to get all the sunlight, but then as the sun goes from east to west, this section of roof that you can see the sun on in this, in this photo, will get, will get the majority of the sun. So it actually, this is what makes sense from kind of an energy production standpoint. It's also nice that the roofs that are actually touching each other will all be the same material. So you're not going to be looking at, okay, here's the slate roof next to concrete, or here's a, here's a solar next to concrete, or solar next to slate. You're going to be kind of looking at all solar, or, you know, or all slate, or all concrete. So when you're actually looking at it, the aesthetics of it, I think are going to be, to be pretty attractive. And we've got a few photos, if we could scroll down a little bit into the, into the first few pages of the letter, Christina, just kind of show what this, what this looks like. This is our engineering report. Oh, yeah. That's really, oops. So that's, that's a look at it. That's sort of one, these are some of the projects that I've done so far. You may scroll up a little bit.
I was looking, can I ask a question? So the color of the non-solar concrete?
Yeah.
Is going to be grayish? It's more like?
Yes, it'd be dark charcoal.
Yeah, it's going to be more like the Connecticut slate?
Yeah.
And then the solar ones are, okay, you'll show us, perfect.
So it's very heavy. Those are just Connecticut.
Yep. That's what is on the front of the house.
That's on the front of the house. This is concrete.
And that's on the house now?
That's on the house now. The concrete is going to be the one that's facing the Horvers in the small section of roof.
This is the non-solar concrete?
Non-solar concrete.
Why wouldn't you put Connecticut slate instead of this?
What's that?
Why wouldn't you put Connecticut slate instead of this? Because this matches more of that?
That's right. Yeah, and it's also just from an engineering perspective, these weigh the same, whereas that weighs more than slate, so we have two roof lines connecting. You need this. Okay. So this, I mean, again, it doesn't quite look like this on the outside.
The picture doesn't represent it.
Representative. So this is the PV. It's basically, it's on top of the, of the concrete, right? So you can see, it's like mesh, right? It's not, like Tesla is glass, you can see right there. Tesla's glass and so it sort of shimmers.
Yeah, I've heard that.
It's almost like better in low light.
This would be the mechanisms that go to some?
Like you can see it's kind of carved into the bottom.
And that's going to be in the garage, you said?
That's right. Okay. So none of that would be visible, right?
I mean, it's so much better than the?
Right. Yeah, well, I've looked at this for a while and a lot of these companies, there's a lot of companies doing it, but it's, they're like all in Europe and they're not, you know, around.
Is there some aspect of the roof that's asphalt in the back? Because I saw a note that there's like kind of on the edges, that that, that the voltaic doesn't, doesn't go to the edge?
It will, it will go to the edge.
It will go to the edge.
Maybe we can, Christina, if we go to the section where it was highlighted, which parts of the roof will be, it's like highlighted in red, I think, shows exactly where.
I think it's below.
Yeah, there, we're getting. Yeah. Yeah, so, so that shows, that, so this is the, this is the section of roof that is sort of facing our neighbors right behind us, the Vermetts. And so that will be solar. That section of the roof to the right of that, that's not highlighted in red, will just be the traditional, will be that concrete. And then, of course, the, the front-facing section of roof will be, will be slate.
So the construction at the house is going on as we speak?
It is, that's right.
I stopped by today. How quickly do you need an answer? I mean, how quickly is this happening?
So, so they're framing the house, I think, starting next week. So, yeah, pretty soon.
Well, and unless you place this in service by 12:31 of this year?
Yeah, it needs to be placed in service. And realistically, probably a few weeks before that, so.
But that's the deadline?
That's the tax credit. Yeah, tax credit's gone. It's a 30% tax credit.
What is the tax credit?
30%.
30% of the cost?
Yeah. And there's no, there's no cap. There's no cap to the tax credit.
So the 120 whatever thousand?
Yeah, it's like $40,000.
Wow. Okay. Just, I'm not really harping on this, just trying to sort of understand how this thing is applied. On page A103, there's just a little section that says, you know, roof material is asphalt shingle, a single layer of shingles. And it's sort of on the backside, kind of on the edge, like I think that was?
Yeah, I think that might be just a?
All the way to the left.
That might be a typo. I apologize for that.
Okay, yeah, now, because I was trying to figure out like how, like is it edge in, you know, asphalt, or is it just over the whole roof?
Yeah. But this is, this is a good diagram here. So this, all the red here is, is solar.
And this is sloped at the top, it's sloped down?
That's right.
It's sloped down in this direction, looking at the rear elevation.
Yeah, we had this, we had this report done, we had this study done, it's like called Eagle View Report, where they just take pictures of your house and they just look at kind of where it's situated. And they'll tell you like specific sections of the roof that are going to generate a lot of solar and some that, you know, aren't going to generate. And it was exactly this, this section here. So everything else was sort of like, was not going to be that effective. I do, it's worth?
This is south?
So, so that is like, so this is northeast.
Yep.
So the southwest, that's right. So like Seth, yeah, when the sun goes from east to west, it's like by the end of the day, it actually still hits that, that sort of new section of roof facing 26 Duesenberg. So I think that we're going to generate, you know, probably 85, 90% of all our power needs from this, hopefully.
So you're thinking about 85 to 90% of your electricity will be met by this system?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to estimate now because, I mean, the house is getting bigger, so there will be no power need, or there're going to be more power needs. But also, since we're moving from, you know, gas boiler to geothermal, that also will be more electricity. So we don't, we don't know. We really, we sort of had an estimate and we came up, we figured it was around, it's going to be around kind of 80 to 90% of the power needs met through this. We're not including energy storage as part of this proposal, it was just sort of too much to take on. So it'll, so basically, ConNet has net metering, so we'll, basically all the electricity that is generated from this during the day will be used to power the house and everything will just be effectively sold back to the grid. So we'll get a credit every month for the excess power that we generate.
And they have a way of capturing that?
Yeah.
So you're not going to do that on-site, like store it and reuse it?
Yeah, I think we may at some point in the future. It's just there was, we were throwing so many new things, you know, kind of in a short timeframe, we just, we didn't have time for it. But that would also be, in the event that we did, you know, get energy storage, that would just go inside the garage. So really, none of this, other than the roof tile, there's really nothing that's visible on the exterior of the house.
And you talk about the screening requirement and we're, in the document here, you talk about the screening requirement and you're saying you're not going to do that because all the, all the mechanics are going to go inside your garage. So just give us, is that like size of us, or is it like size of a car? How much room does the mechanics take in to do what they do?
I mean, I think, I think the biggest piece is the solar inverter, which is maybe three by three, something like that. So I think that if we started to talk about energy storage, those are pretty big. Those Tesla power walls are pretty?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I think in my head.
And, but you can, you can stack them so they come out a little bit. So those are, those are larger. Those are, I don't know the size of them, but maybe like four by two or something, or four by three. So those are pretty large. But for the, for the purposes of this project, there's not going to be a whole lot on the inside. The inverter's going to be the largest piece to it.
So the, the roof cap between the front, which is the slate, and the back, which is the voltaic, is that slate also? Just to sort of navigate the difference between the two?
Yeah, we're going to try to kind of match what we, what we have currently on the roof cap. And it might just, it's something that will, I think, I think will be, will be sorted out on-site as the construction commences. But the plan is working with Andrew and, and the company called Ergosun, as well as the builder, to, you know, to, to make sure that the aesthetics match, you know, what we have in the front of the house.
Is there anything that we should take away from all these pages about the stress reports?
Yeah, I wish we had our engineer here.
It was hard for me to follow into that, so.
And so, yeah, I'd say probably the biggest consideration with this project for us was not so much like, do the, oh, sorry, do the aesthetics work? But there, as you can, as you can feel, those are just heavy tiles. Now, slate is also very heavy, but this is, so like per square foot, they're about 20% heavier. So now for the new section of the house, that shouldn't be an issue, given, you know, we're kind of starting from scratch and building it out to code. I think for the old, the old part of the house, we will need to bolster the roof and that is, that's, that's what's in the report. So we had our engineer do an extensive analysis of what would be required. And so that, that's what that is.
Yeah, I think, I think the analytics were all there, but the summary wasn't. So it all checks out.
How's that?
Yeah, so we were looking for the punchline. Do you have to do anything to the old roof?
What's that?
You have to do anything to the old roof.
Yeah.
You want to go?
Yeah, so after the engineer took a look?
If you can just identify yourself?
What was that?
If you can just identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Andrew Collingham, the architect for the project, not the engineer on the project. That's Laurel Gaffney. When she took a look at the existing roof rafters and looked at the proposed materials that you have in front of you, yes, they are a bit heavier than traditional roofing materials. So her conclusion was that the existing roof rafters of the house need to be sistered, so doubled up. She also recommended increasing the rafter size of the proposed addition. So now we're using two-by-tens, a little more beefier, to support the additional load. So that's kind of all the charts and diagrams were in reference to the structural support of the roof. Yes, they were a bit hard to follow, I agree too. It's not just you.
Thank you. And somewhere here, you notified all the neighbors and all the neighbors were in favor of doing, doing this work?
Yeah, I mean, the three neighbors that can, that can see it, I spoke to and they were all, actually, it's four neighbors, they, they all were in support of it. And some were even asking if, well, we've been thinking about something like this, could, you think we could put it on the front of the house? You know, that type of thing. So I think they were generally happy with the aesthetics and feeling like we don't care if we have to look at it, because there's nothing like, nothing really to look at.
Christina, they all would have received notice under?
They have received notice. I don't know if they've been?
Understood, understood. And you can give us some assurance you're not going to be back next month with something else?
As long as you approve it. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a question, if, like slate roof, I used to have a slate roof, it gets, they break and things hit them, is it similar to this? You just go up and replace one of the solar panels because they're independent?
It'd be one at a time, that's right.
Because, you know, something, things happen, you know?
That's right, yeah.
So it's just the same idea?
Yes, very similar.
And this doesn't produce any glare, right?
No.
That's part of it.
I've got, I mean, if you want to see more photos, they've got a whole gallery from Voltaic. But, but yeah, there's actually, if any of you've spent any time up in New Canaan, there's a St. Eulius church and school. It's right in the middle of downtown New Canaan. They're completely redoing that, that property and it's, it's this roof on everything. It looks pretty good.
But I'm just making the assumption that while this is more aesthetically pleasing than conventional solar, it may also be more expensive.
That's right.
And therefore, not everyone is making this choice.
Yeah, I think it's, where it becomes competitive is that when you compare it to replacing the whole roof with slate, then it becomes, the payback is immediate, right? Because if you, because frankly, a slate roof is much more expensive than this.
If there aren't more questions, why don't we open up the public meeting, see if there is anyone who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting. Any discussion?
I was at the DRC meeting when this was presented and they were very happy about the look of it and being able to avoid the kind of trade-offs that are normally faced when somebody does a typical solar panel that we've seen before us previously. So I think it's a great idea. Me as well. I'm very happy that you brought the samples to see that, that three different materials and it, on a roof, that's, could be pretty hard to distinguish. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree. I'm happy you brought those because it was what I imagined from their documentation, but seeing is believing.
So I'm not going to say that I would absolutely adore it on the front of a traditional house. However, I think it's the best product that I've seen and it's on the, the rear yard and completely applaud any effort to generate, you know, electricity and other means. And so I, I think it's fabulous. But again, I think that there's a little bit of a ways to go before we really, you know, mimic the, the natural materials. So I'd like to see a little bit more development, especially if the costs are the same, in aesthetic, you know, opinion.
And I, I would just add that I understand the timing in sort of now or never, not just from a tax credit perspective, but also you have to reinforce the house to support this weight and therefore, there's some time urgency to all this. So I think we understand all that.
And you'd like a roof this winter, so.
Yeah.
It'd be nice. Okay, if there isn't more discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve the application for, is it 30?
30 Duesenberg.
30 Duesenberg as submitted. Is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't pick them all up at once.
Technology is just amazing that they can do this versus looking at prior applications that we saw. Very. I shout God. I shout God.
Not everybody's going to go for it.
Our pleasure.
Our pleasure. So glad you could make it.
Let's give Liz a minute to-
Don't put yourself here, it's all good.
Before we get into Four Westway, do you know why this is coming to us? It looks like a zoning thing.
Yeah, I checked, I'm carrying that. Not a great audience.
I'm searching for Four Westway.
Okay, okay. Is the consultant here or no? Okay. But it had to come to us somehow.
You can point.
Is, is it also going to have to go to zoning?
Yes, it is.
I think it was just a floor area ratio.
Right, it just, there, what we're discussing up here before we get into Four Westway is kind of, with all due respect, why you're here, because more typically, something like this I've seen go to zoning, not to, not to planning. We've seen things come to planning when the increase is a certain percentage, and therefore, it brings a test, but your percentage increase isn't-
Yeah, there's one specific rule-
Isn't that large, there must be a measurement, and so they will give you a chance when you talk about it, but we're a little confused, we welcome you, but we're a little confused about-
Thank you. There's one specific rule that requires us to come to. Hi there.
Yeah, I'll start you off, and then we'll, then we'll get rolling. So-
Okay, I'll get to that.
Um, our last item for this evening is a proposal relating to Four Westway, and so please come on and up to the mic, introduce yourself, and take us through the plan, including why it needs to be reviewed by planning. So thank you.
Uh, so good evening, members of the planning board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present our project. My name is David Black. This is Kimberly Schell.
Hello.
Uh, and we're with Pratt and Black Architects, located in Bronxville. We're here on behalf of our clients, Caitlin Leelmo and RJ Price of Four Westway. We are proposing to construct a finished habitable space within an existing unfinished attic space. Three new gable dormers are proposed on the roof of the front facade, and one continuous dormer proposed on the rear facade. The primary goal for this attic project is to create an open, light-filled space that accommodates a designated home office for Caitlin, a stroke neurologist at NYU regularly on call, often seeing patients virtually through the day and night, an area with desks for homework, bunk beds, and a play area for their three young sons, ages four, six, and eight, a full bathroom, and finally, a sitting area with a pull-out sofa for the occasional guest. The new front dormers are designed to add charm to the street facade in harmony with the colonial style of the house, similar to attic dormers on other houses in Bronxville. The rear shed dormer provides the ceiling height for the program and allows for the main stair to continue up from the second floor for convenient access to the new finished attic. The project we are proposing increases the floor area to five hundred and seventy-six square feet above allowable for the lot. However, we are not increasing the house footprint, and the lion's share of the square, of the square footage is not visible from the street. Specifically, in answer to your question, if the area we're proposing is over fifteen percent of the existing floor area, and we go over six thousand square foot total, it goes to planning. We also have to go to zoning.
That, that's what I was wondering, because-
We will be here again.
Some of these things, I think zoning may be better equipped to-
Yes.
-discuss than us, so we'll be glad to discuss, and I think DRC also had a discussion, but we'll also take some comfort from the fact that zoning is going to-
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So we're going to zoning at the end of the month. So in conclusion, the proposed finished attic at Four Westway will significantly improve the day-to-day life of this young Bronxville family for many years to come, without adversely impacting their Bronxville neighbors. We hope our proposal meets with the approval of this planning board, and I'm happy to go over any key points from our presentation.
This is a very large lot, do you have, what's the overall acreage of the-
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, RJ is the owner?
Sorry, I'm RJ Price, the homeowner. The two lots together are point nine two acres.
Oh, so it's two lots?
It's two and Four Westway.
So the tennis court is on-
What's that?
Is the tennis court on one of the lots?
Tennis court is on Two Westway, and then the home is on Four Westway, yeah.
So it's a double lot, that explains it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would just add that to the west of the project, it's a hundred and eighty feet to the street. So again, the, the visibility is, is minimal. On the east side of the project is a swimming pool, a highly vegetated area, swimming pool, and the next house is a hundred and fifty feet from the lot. And to the rear, to the south, is Tuckahoe.
And then how far is the next house from the rear of the house?
From the rear of the house-
If you can go up-
You go up one side.
Christina?
Make that bigger or something?
Um, the next house is here, can you read it?
Oops, can you zoom back in? We had it, but we lost it. Yeah.
So the rear lot line is the city limits of Bronxville.
So then it's Mount Vernon?
It's actually Tuckahoe.
Huh.
There's a little pocket of, of Tuckahoe, Eastchester, then. Looking at the tax map plans, there's a little bit, it's called Tuckahoe, and then just below that is Malvernun.
Hmm.
So if you go-
And those rear neighbors were also noticed, Christina?
Yes.
Yep, great.
Yeah, so if you go to the last slide, the, the third to the last slide, you can see the, the dormers.
I thought there was, or I was trying to figure out the difference between this KSCJ report where they talk about FAR. Have you seen this? And the numbers that you have on these pages, they're different FARs.
Um, that, that has all been resolved, I don't, I don't have the report in front of me.
No.
But the numbers are, they, they have the same numbers that we do.
It's these that were on the-
This latest submission was submitted to the consultants, and they've, they've reconciled the numbers and-
And, and I think another reason why you're here is that there's a fif- more than a fifteen percent increase in FAR.
There's a, uh, that's the reason, yes, it's a fifteen percent increase from the existing.
And over six thousand, eight thousand square feet, but I think it's a fifteen percent increase. I think in your case goes to a twenty-three percent increase, is that how you mean?
That's right.
That's correct.
Twenty-three and a half, I think.
It seems like the most visible part of this will be the dormers that are facing front. So that when you come down Westway, you will be seeing the front-facing-
Yeah, if you go up, up a slide.
-dormers, they'll be more visible, yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
That's really the impact.
That's the impact, and, and again, this is in keeping with other houses in Bronxville. It's very typical to see a colonial with dormers like that.
Currently up there, it's just an unfinished attic?
The lower image is the, and it's unfinished, completely unfinished attic right now.
So it's a standard two and a half story?
Yeah.
So the, you, you mentioned in the report that it could be for when people come in for the holidays to stay over in a bed, is that, is that, I guess, a legal space to use? If you don't put a bathroom, is it fair to, to use that as a-
We're putting a bathroom.
So you're allowed to use that as a, is it under the, I don't know what the rules are, if someone can use it as a, can count it as a bedroom or something?
It's a habitable space, that's right. We'll be sprinkling-
I don't know the rule, I'm just asking.
We'll be sprinkling it and following all the rules that it, it will be-
Don't you need a exit from the third floor?
Yeah, like a, a secondary exit, or where you use a ladder, or where do you get it?
We have accessible windows.
I see. So those will be, be able to be pushed out or something?
Mm-hmm.
Some of us with two and a half story houses are pretty confused.
I believe, I think you're gonna, you need a fire, I believe you need a fire sprinkler-
Yes, I think what we're asking is-
Fire, ah, okay. Yeah, we mentioned that this, we need, we need one of the, the door fires.
So if you-
Yeah, yeah, he's saying, he's saying we need a fire sprinkler.
Yeah, but they're saying the windows are going to be that.
And, and it's sprinkled.
The windows, you know, high, you sweep it out, but you sprinkle it all, area, the exits out, that's, that's going to need us out.
Take care of it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I think it's great. If I'm room, everyone's going to be there by Christmas time.
Other questions around the, around the board about the proposed addition? I mean, none, I think we'll go to the public meeting, see if anyone has shown up with any perspectives on this project. Anyone from the public? Yes, please. Can you come on up to the mic, please? And if you could identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Annette Adamiat, and I live at Two, Northwestway, so I'm right around the corner. I would like to actually see the drawings of this, because I'm, I can't really visualize. Okay.
Let us know which ones you want us to focus on.
Yeah, from the front of the house, I want to see.
I think the one with the dormer was nice, the, one of the first ones.
Yeah, okay.
So the bottom is the existing and the top, I believe, is the new, is that correct?
Got it, I couldn't really see it from where I was.
And from the back?
But I just, you know, I had a question about, I know for, I've lived in Bronxville for thirty years, and this is our second home in Bronxville. And for the longest time, you couldn't build in the attic because of the fire hazards. And, so I guess that's changed?
Um, they're going to be sprinkled, they're going to be made, so-
Okay.
That's-
So in other words, we, that, sorry, that could have been done before, as long as we-
About a year ago, but-
Okay.
So I guess, or, in nineteen, they allowed it, it's not a-
If, if it was an existing space, then you could renovate it, you couldn't put an addition on-
Right.
And make it three stories.
Okay.
We went, we went through that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it looks fine. And I appreciate getting the notice, and, yeah, so.
And all the detailed plans are up on the website, so-
Yeah.
Anything you want to really dig into, it's, everything we've got will be available to you too.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, thank you for coming out.
But to be clear, there's no elevation of the existing roof line, exactly the same height.
You're talking about existing, uh, the-
You're punching out the dormers, that's what you're-
Okay.
Okay, with that, if there's no one else in the public, I think we're going to close the public meeting and open it up for discussion.
So with the additional bathroom, does zoning deal with the kind of sewage, water treatment aspects of this?
The extra load?
Yeah, I, I feel like, you know, Kevin, the building inspector, I think, will-
So they'll have to say that even the bathroom- They're allowed to put bathrooms, they're allowed to put bathrooms equal.
Did you make any, the, the existing septic system, and it's all obviously public, it's no strain, it's, it's capacity, are you going to put like AC or anything like that up there? Heat?
Y- yes.
If you can come up here.
And, and you have, like, the, the existing system is able to come, because it's a pretty big space you're adding?
It, it will be reworked. There's current ducting that needs to be put into the walls, but that's all being taken care of.
On our third floor, we had to go with forced air to get it up there, yeah.
Whoops, sorry, what'd you say?
We've lived this, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're doing forced hot air, and it'll be heat pump as well.
It's hard to get things up to the top floor of these old houses, so, yeah, but there is technology.
Regarding the septic, since there's no change in occupancy, it's still the same amount of occupants, so it's the same amount of people-
Oh, I see, so you-
Using the-
If you had one bathroom, it's fifty, if you own three people, it's the same amount.
Other discussion?
You know, I think a lot of families are trying to update our housing stock with, with expanding some of the space. I think this design appropriately reflects the, reflects the, honors the existing design without making substantial changes, and that, while the square footage is significant in aggregate, it does not appear to be extending a lot of the house. It's using a lot of unused space, and the visible area is really to the back of the house, and I think it looks nice along those lines. So I think it's a, it's a thoughtful design.
Jim, was there feedback from DRC that you'd want to report on, on this?
It wasn't, uh, before DRC.
Oh, this didn't have to go?
No. I'm a little troubled by the massing in the back.
We flip to the back for a second?
Sorry, what'd you say, Jim?
I'm a little troubled by the massing in the back.
Because it's a full dormer all the way across in the back, it's broken up in the front, but in the back, it's one large, that's who you're referring to, Jim?
Yeah.
I guess as they're trying to maximize the sort of cubic footage, they can-
Yeah, well, the, the stairs come up the back, and so that's really where we needed to have the most amount of height, and also, it's not visible really from any other neighbors, so we felt like this was an appropriate way of providing for the program.
It's not visible to the neighbors behind in Tuckahoe?
Well, yeah, I, it, it, I don't know, actually. There's some vegetation, you know, vegetation screening, but our studies were really from the east and the west and the north.
Because we do care about Tuckahoe too.
Fair enough.
We can zoom in on that.
There's large evergreen trees that, for right now, the neighbors, south, east-
You can see them, yeah.
Yeah, cannot really see through to our house. And then Ten Westway has, I mean, they, I can't see their house, they can't see our house, there's massive amount of vegetation.
The one directly under them, there's, there are large plantings in the rear of their yard.
You mean on hilltop?
Yeah.
There's basically, I mean-
Perfect, that's great.
All of these homes in that one, basically can't see them all.
Because-
The only thing visible to us really is, is three or five.
But that's, but that's way in there, their house is way in.
How tall are those trees that are behind you? That's, I think, what we're talking about.
They're huge, they're, they're a lot.
And they're evergreen?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a pretty private lot.
Yeah, it is.
As Bronxville goes, where that doesn't really exist.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Now are we ready for a motion?
Motion to approve the designs for Four Westway as submitted.
Is there a second? One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Um, and as, as far as that goes, because we understand you do have to go to zoning, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we've wrapped it up. We do have a special meeting coming up a week from this Thursday to review the Iona project, so that for anyone watching, will be on Thursday, the sixteenth, at six thirty PM, here at Village Hall. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
One in favor? Thank you, everybody.